In session, the Honorable Michael Johnson will give the invocation pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. As we gather here tonight, we ask for your blessings and guidance. We pray for our troops and all who are in harm's way. We pray for peace. We pray that you give us your guiding hand in our deliberations tonight and that we do what is best for the people of York County. We pray that we achieve success by working together and being mindful of our goals. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of our United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business is to swear you in oath of office for newly appointed boards and commissioners. So when I call your name, if you'd please come forward so Michael can swear you in. First person, Mike Durelia, I hope I said that correctly.
Durelia.
Durelia, okay, sorry about that. Kim Traynor, Dennis Gedder, Brad Harvey, Pierre Langivan, Sarah Goodson, Joanna De Pastina, Andrea Cooper, Ryan Davis.
I would like to say a few words and shake your hand from up in York County. Thank you for your service to our boards and commissioners. We couldn't do our work without your help.
You sure?
Yes. Can you kindly raise your right hand?
How about the auto, 1712?
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I duly qualify.
And I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
1712.
To exercise the duties of the office.
1702.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
Why don't you see it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Good.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you for your continued service.
Appreciate you serving.
Thank you.
How are you?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for serving.
Hello. Thank you for your service.
Hey. Thank you for serving.
Thank you for serving.
Next order of business is appearances. And here again, under appearances, you have five minutes to speak, so just remember that. Or if you have a computer video that you need to show with your presentation, then you have up to 10 minutes. The first thing, the council is honored to recognize one of our employees, Jenny Moore, for her service, and she's getting ready to retire, so. Put a hand. And she served from February 1990 to May 31st of this year.
Yes.
Let me bring this to you. Do you make it that far?
Thank you.
It's an honor to have you work for the county. We appreciate your service, and if you want to say anything, feel free to.
Andy's afraid of what I might say, so I'll be quiet. But it has been an honor and a pleasure to work for York County these 27 years. And I'm going to say one thing, I started in the bowels of York County government. I started at the landfill. And so now I'm in 911 addressing, and I am the one that you could have constituents call in fussing if they have to have a new road name or address change. I'm one of those responsible people for that. But I would like to thank my family that's here with me tonight, Stephen Moore and his wife Sabrina and two boys, my daughter Carla and my daughter Margaret. And let's see, Stephen and Sabrina are county employees, and then I have some in-laws that are county employees too, so we've got you covered.
Thank you. Mike Swat, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Our next, our next order of business is Keep York County Beautiful to present their annual report. And if you have a video, you got up to 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is April Hershey, and I'm representing Keep York County Beautiful. On behalf of KYCB, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and would first like to thank a few individuals, the York County Council, York County Management, the York County Public Works, specifically Eric Record, Director, and Ryan Blank, the Assistant Director, and also York County Solid Waste Collection and Recycling, the Administrative Staff. We are now celebrating the end of our fourth year in educating through our mission to inspire and engage citizens to take personal responsibility for improving the environment of their York County community. To date, we have, this year, we have over 402 volunteer hours, and that's valued at over $9,471. Keep York County Beautiful received over $17,000 in grants just this past year from Keep South Carolina Beautiful, Palmetto Pride. In addition, KYCB also received a few awards, the Keep America Beautiful 2016 President's Circle Recognition Award and the Keep South Carolina Beautiful Affiliate Recognition Award. The total value to York County this year was $26,971. Grants and awards KYCB has earned to date is over $106,000. The Keep York County Board is not only a planning board, but also a hands-on working board who truly love where they live. York County residents are encouraged to volunteer at events with us. KYCB project-focused areas include beautification, waste reduction, and litter prevention. We ask everyone to please follow us on social media, Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, and we even have hashtags, hashtag KYCB and hashtag Love Where You Live. There are a couple programs that we participate in each year, including the Dr. T Less Litter Presentations that reach over, reach on average 2,000 students and staff with an anti-litter message each year. We also participate in Earth Day Birthday. This is a very popular community event hosted at the York County Museum with over 1,400 people present this year. We also participated in the Great America Cleanup. The 2017 theme was "Not in My Yard" as we want our citizens to have pride in York County. Each, the last two years, we've received grant funding to support scholarships for local high school and college students, as well as additional mini-grants available to nonprofit organizations and schools to have individual projects that they would like funded through the grant program. We received grant funding this year to assist other community organizations in funding these projects to promote beautification in areas such as right-of-ways, medians, building exteriors, parks, and other natural areas in order to improve the York County environment. We even gave preference to projects benefiting pollinators. Each year, we also conduct the Keep America Beautiful Litter Index. As a Keep America Beautiful affiliate in York County, we are required to do this each year. The Litter Index is a simple tool used to visually assess the amount of litter present in a community. Each year, groups of four to five people drive around York County on a predetermined sample of roads and rate the amount of litter that is visible. The scale is from one to four, with one being minimal to no litter and four being extremely There are also a variety of volunteer litter programs for individuals, groups, churches, and businesses, such as Adopt a County Road, which is a one-to-two mile stretch of county roadway, the Great America Cleanup, the Litter Challenge, and also the new one this year, Adopt Your Spot. Finally, we want everyone to love where you live, our Keep York County Beautiful slogan. We invite our neighbors of York County to become involved with their community and improve their environment. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Appreciate it, April.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next person, Fred's going to present Ebenezer Park Master Plan, and I think Mr. Williams dealt with this in his committee.
Yes, sir. Lisa and Pat are both really excited about this, and they couldn't decide who got to introduce our consultant. So since it came out of our committee, I told them I'd do it. The last committee meeting we had, we saw, didn't even realize that the plan was happening, but we're really impressed with the, with the master plan for Ebenezer Park. And I mean, it's a great park like it is now. It's got the potential to be even greater, so without any, we didn't get to hear the consultant, but ADC is here to present it, and we're looking forward to it. And Fred, I'll let you tell everybody your last name.
My name is Fred Guthier. I work with ADC Engineering out of Greenville Office. I'm a landscape architect.
Welcome.
And I just want to say, first of all, we are honored to be awarded this master plan, and it's been a pleasure to work with Pat and Lisa and Ron on this project. It's going to be a fantastic project, I think. So the project started about six months ago, and many of y'all probably are very familiar with the park itself. It's heavily visited, 50,000 visitors between Memorial Day and Labor Day every year. But the park was built in the early 80s, and there's been some piecemeal improvements throughout, throughout the way, but there's many, many pieces of the park that are just out of date and disrepair, and there's also a need, because of the visitors, to increase the amenities. So as a part of the master plan, well, let me, let me just stay a little bit with the existing conditions. This is the beach out there right now, not quite the standard of like a Miami beach, but, but you know, there's kids, and when I was out there playing and swimming, and they set ropes out, and it's, it's a nice area and, and used heavily. Couple of other areas of disrepair, this is what I call maybe a late 80s drainage plan, where you just take your parking lot water and sweep it right out into the swimming area, which is kind of what we want to stay away from nowadays. This is the master plan, and we worked with staff for several months just to kind of come up with some of the improvements that they wanted. There was ideas that some of the campers, some of the ideas that they had throughout the years of amenities that they wanted to add. Right now, there, there's not really a place for fishing. It's kind of integrated with some of the swimming. And so we compiled all of the desirables and then improvements and came up with this master plan. One of the main focuses with the master plan is that we wanted to add a fishing pier, but because of the limited amount of space, we also wanted to add places, amenities for people to go out on the water itself, because land is becoming very valuable in this area. Another improvement that we wanted to make was, as of now, the parking lot gets right up onto, near the beach, and we wanted, we felt like that it would be best if we added a green area in between the parking lot and the beach so that we could use that space for frisbee or whatever, whatever anybody wanted to do with that area, and move the parking lot further away from the beach, something that's a little bit unsightly. So, and then we categorized all the improvements, prioritized, I should say, all the improvements, and, and obviously, the first one is the beach and the pier. So the plan for the master plan was to increase the beach and then add some more seating along the edge of picnic areas that people and parents can look over their kids playing on the beach and also the water. We felt like this circular pier created a nice space for, for kids to swim in and to be safe in. We're also looking at ideas of maybe dredging out some of the swimming area, because right now it's very shallow, so any parents that get in the water may be, may be thigh-high. And then, like I mentioned before, we also have picnic tables and double-sided swings out on the, on the pier, so people can go out on the pier and enjoy it. It's actually using space that wasn't there to begin with, that we were so hard to find land before. And then, and potentially, you could have your lifeguard chairs out on, on these piers as well, looking, looking inwards. And then all the fishing, we'd have signs, and we have these little bump outs for, for people to fish out away from the, the swimming area, to keep those separated. Here's a couple of examples. We've done, ADC's done several parks, waterfront parks, and this is one example that we did in Mount Pleasant. If any of y'all have been down there, they have these shelters, and then inside the shelters, some picnic tables, and then we designed these double-sided swings with the crest of Mount Pleasant in between. They're very heavy swings, because, so they're, they're very relaxing, and it's just a nice place to sit out, look over the water. And here's just a, here's just a quick kind of sketch of how those, how those shelters would face out away and out over, across the lake. The, the next priority of the park was to create some green space in between the beach and get some more green space closer to the beach. And we've designed this great lawn in the middle, and the great lawn can be used, again, for any activities. We've also added a new sand volleyball court and a new half basketball court. And then again, move the parking up closer away, or further away from the lake. The structure at the end of the great lawn is kind of a neat structure that you could have, you can close it up and you could have events inside it. People could rent it out for any sort of event, but also you give the ability to open up maybe barn doors that opened up to a stage so that you could have music, and people could sit out in the great lawn and have music out there. Also have a couple bathrooms and, and a kitchen. One piece I didn't talk about was a fountain back at, back at the top corner of the pier there for kids to play in on the real hot days. There might be more kids playing in this than in the actual lake. And then a couple other amenities that the staff wanted was trails to go up through the campground, also a little pull-off at the ranger station, a couple more day slips. We've also, we're also showing a kayak canoe launch out here away from, you know, the boats, but, but there's a nice drop-off where they can load up their canoes and get out on the water. We also did a little bit of work with the circulation, just a better circulation of people bringing in their boats, and then this roundabout that helps with the traffic congestion was a problem, or is a problem now with the current, current layout. I think that's, that's all the master plan.
So any questions, since this is, probably should have been under new business or full business, whatever business, but any questions for Fred, Mr. Roddy?
I was just going, want you to highlight, how far out is the pier going to go, just so, so people.
Um, let's see.
Like to call this point out.
We got, it's about 100 and, that's, that's about 140-foot radius.
Okay. And about what's the approximate elevation?
The elevation?
Yeah.
It would probably be maybe three or four feet off, off the water level, the mean water level, and then the shelters themselves might stick up another, maybe 10 feet on one side, up to 20 feet on the other side.
Did you say we were going to allow fishing from the, from the pier?
Yeah, to that, on the outside of the pier.
Well, how, do you know how deep the water is where you max out on the, on the loop?
Uh, we, we don't have any hydrological survey yet. That's obviously something that would need to be done going forward, but from what I've been able to tell people out there, it's not very deep, but maybe as far as we're getting out, right now, I think it's only, they got 75 feet.
The rest go out about 75 feet.
So we're, we're obviously trying to increase that to get them out far enough so that there's some, some decent fishing and then also some, some good swimming, larger swimming area.
And it's going to be, maybe, Pat, I need to ask you this, the boat slips, you know, to the left of the present one?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that going to be deep enough?
Yeah, there's actually the pool in that area.
Okay.
So that's a better place for, felt like emergency access to, for, you know, when we have issues on the water, or incidents on the water, because there's a lot of congestion around that area, having to clear the boat grounds.
And the parking lot, that's going to be cut in, I mean, it's just a diagram, is that about half what it used to be?
It's actually very creasey.
Oh, it'll be bigger?
Number spots, yes.
But you'll cut it back and make green space.
Correct. Right now, there's, there's some green space right here that's just really unused, so we're using a lot of that to.
Yeah, Mr. Roddy, very impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw this plan, little chat, about a month, little over a month ago, and one of our committee meetings, and I just want to point out, just for, if we have, just for transparency's sake, any idea what, what this is going to cost?
Um, yeah, we've done some preliminary numbers. Again, this is all preliminary study without kind of knowing breakdown of design, but the beach, we have the beach pier, the beach and pier and the dredging is 2.2 mil. We have the site work at 1 mil, and then the site structure is about a half a million dollars. The total projects, before contingencies, at 4 million, so about 4 and 1/2 million.
Any other questions?
You ran a big enough check bump with the bump, Rodney and Peter.
I like to get one of those swill sessions named after me, though, for real.
Anything you want to add?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you did.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, let's see, now we have public forum, remember with this, now you only have two minutes, no more than two minutes. Four people signed up. The first one, Audrey Peram?
Yes.
That's a public hearing?
Yes.
So you want to wait until the public, because that way you're not restricted.
Sure.
Okay. So just either pro or con, just when I say, just raise your hand and I'll tell you to come on forward. Next person is P. Conway. Initial P. and then Conway. Conway? Once, twice? No Conway. Okay, Erin Ramey? Erin Ramey? Uh, oh, there you are. And be sure to give your name and address.
Erin Ramey, 1461 Flintwood Drive. I'm here to speak last, the last meeting on May the 1st, the first reading in regards to refunding the overpayment for the taxes that I paid for the 10 years. Councilman Love stated that we, that you should all should implement a new law for four years, so I would get an additional refund for two years. But I don't think it's fair to refund me on a law that's not even passed yet. Right now, it's not the law for four years. You have the statute of limitation to go back how far you want to go. So I think that in fairness, I should be refunded for the full 10 years, and even the tax assessor and the county manager is agreeing. So I'm trying to figure out where in the 40 mil plus reserve is $1,007 going to break York County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Nikita, I'm assuming that's Jackson?
It is.
And be sure to name and address.
Nikita Jackson, 1026 Southland Park, and I'm just here to stand in support for Ms. Rainey. When we look at this, basically, just, you know, do the right thing. Let's take our emotions out of this and just do the right thing. It's in black and white. There is nothing that stated that she shouldn't be paid, and she even have the county tax assessor who's agreeing that she should be paid that amount because of the overpayment. I believe in doing the right thing. If we do the right thing, good things can happen, and this would be a good thing for her too, because we look at the timeframe that she paid this money. That was in 2005. For some, during that time period, the economics were horrible, and she came out of her pocket. She paid it on time. She was not late. She did the right thing, and I just think if we would just take our emotions out of this and just really look back, and, and there are no statutes of limitations saying that, that the county cannot refund her that money, so why not just do the right thing and refund her the money? I'm pretty sure during that, during that time period, she probably could have fell on some hard times and could have used that money for other things, but she did the right thing and paid the taxes that were owed at the time, under the understanding that she had to pay them. And I just asked that the county council would just please do the right thing. She overpaid, and just pay her her money back. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, items consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Need a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Get to the next item here, as I turn the pages. Okay, public hearing, like Mr. Williams said. Okay, consider second reading and public hearing case number 1624 to rezon from AGC 1 to RUD 1 at 1954 and 1984 Highway 161 in the Kings Mountain Township. Anybody here want to speak against this rezoning, against? Yes, sir. And be sure to give your name and address.
I live 1346 Tom Hope Road in Kings Mountain Township. That land that's behind me joins my property, and there's a swamp in that area, and it's a lot of trees in there. I hate to see them be cut down and houses go in there. I like to see that land stay no agricultural. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else opposed? Anybody? Yes, sir. And once again, name and address.
My name's Thomas, I'm sorry. My name's Thomas Hope. I live at 1353 Tom Hope Road. I mean, it's, it's just personal with me. I just hate to see a house and building go in behind us there. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else opposed? Anybody for? We have a motion to close the hearing?
Move close. Second.
Discussion, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We need a new motion.
Move to approve second reading.
Second.
Discussion. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, consider second reading and public hearing, case number 1707 BD 1 to BD 3 at intersection of 161 and Highway 55 in the Clover Community. Anybody want to speak against? Against?
Against, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Aubrey Peram. I'm at 2719 Highway 161 South. My house is right across from the property that has been asked to be rezoned at that intersection of 161 and Highway 55. I'm asking that the, that the property remain zone BD 1. I don't believe that to rezon this property as the BD 3 will be beneficial to our community. It's my understanding that, sorry, I'm nervous.
Oh, you're fine.
Um, that the developer who's applied for this rezoning has done so for the purpose of building a Dollar General store there, and building a Dollar General store on that property will increase traffic, and with that comes increased traffic accidents. Also, it causes excessive noise and also light pollution in an otherwise rural area. These types of stores are also known for high, higher rates of crime, and they generate significant amounts of trash and litter. And once built, these stores, they look great. And once built, these stores, they look great for a little while, but then I've noticed that they seem to not be well-kept. And they quickly become eyesores. Also, there's, there's just not a need for this store in our community. There are eleven Dollar General stores within fifteen miles of this location, two of which are six or seven miles away. It's unneeded and unwanted in this community and that's evidenced by the over five hundred signatures that I've received from people who, this, this petition represents people who live in our community, they work there, they own property there, and they love this rural area. May I present you with the petition?
Hand it to the gentleman right beside you.
Thank you. I've spent a lot of time in the community over the last week, talking to them, letting them know what's going on. A lot of people didn't have any idea about this. And there was an overwhelmingly negative response to this store coming here. We, in the Bethany area, we live here because it's a rural location. We don't expect to be close to chain stores. We love the quiet country setting. We like to be able to see, look up and see the stars at night because there's no light pollution. We want to see pastures, farm animals, trees, that's why we live there. And we, we want to have a place where we can live where there aren't big businesses, where there's not bright lights and heavy traffic. This Dollar General store would not provide additional benefit to our community. It threatens the viability of local existing businesses, small businesses at that, and it threatens our residential property values. Because it's not desirable to live across from one of these stores, I am concerned for my own home value and also for my neighbors' home values. And let's not forget that this area is largely residential. When you go down one sixty-one and Highway fifty-five, you see homes. These are people's homes. And we want it to stay that way, residential. And I'd also like to take a minute to speak about, on the application, it states that this area is a food desert. And it's absolutely not true. Within five miles of this location, there is a grocery store, but there's also multiple grocery stores that aren't very far away. In addition, there are multiple certified, South Carolina certified farm stands in this area. And also, this area, you know, a lot of people, we grow our own food. We have gardens, that's why we live out there, again, in the country, to have property, to do those things. Also, to suggest that Dollar General provides health food of any sort is laughable. But, you know, I would even say that Dollar General would have a negative impact on the public health and welfare of our community simply because they, they offer low-quality food, I mean, I don't know what I'd call it food, but it's processed food products that are proven to contribute to poor health. And some might say, well, these are, these are more jobs for our area. But, Dollar General has shown that they do not care about the communities that they build in. They pay their workers far below prevailing wages. And that causes their employees to have to rely on tax subsidies in order to get by. In two thousand and thirteen, Glassdoor.com, which ranks companies based on employee satisfaction, they actually ranked Dollar General the fourth worst company in America to work for. The complaints included poor wages, poor benefits, poorly trained management, higher-than-standard accident rates, and unresponsive upper management and unsafe facilities. This does not sound like a responsible employer that cares about its workers or the community that they live in. And in closing, I'd like to just say also that this area is located on the Western York County scenic byway. It's right there on that corner, on this byway. The sign for the byway is like right in my yard. The description of our community on the York County website says it all, and I'd like to quote, "A drive along these country roads provides travelers with a glimpse into a rich rural heritage that is becoming increasingly rare. From the sweeping vistas of fertile farmland to the rolling pastures of grazing livestock, to the silent majesty of canopy trees lining the roadside, to the simple charm of mythical Mayberry Main Streets, this route meanders through the rustic beauty of Western York County." And I like that rustic beauty because that's what it is. Putting a Dollar General on this beautiful route will detract from that rustic beauty and it does not fit into our rural landscape. To ignore the desires of hundreds of people as seen on the petition for the financial benefit of a few who do not have our best interest in mind would be devastating to us who live here. The people who live in this community have spoken. We do not want this store here and we implore this council to deny the request to rezon this property and build an unwanted eyesore in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Price, I live at seventeen forty-six Edge Park Road. And I just want to second what she's saying about the area. If I wanted to live near a Dollar General, I would live somewhere else. If I wanted to live near a store, I would live somewhere else. We choose to live that way. We have an elementary school that's against the pasture. Our kids can see cows' births occasionally and that's how we intend it to be. There's really not a need for it at all. And just looking at the, their short-term venture of being able to do that and make some money for not their employees, but for upper management versus these long-term things of in five years when it's starting to deteriorate. And in ten years, when it's starting to gather things in the parking lot that we know happen in places that are starting to deteriorate. Or in twenty years, what's completely abandoned and sitting there. And it's just not a place for that. Now, should a business be there? Sure. That kind of business, no. And I just have some pictures that I took from our Dollar General over by the bylo at Alexander Love today, on my way between appointments for work, and it is trashed. It is not a they forgot to do it today, or they forgot to do it this week, or even they forgot to do it this month. It is not taken care of. And is it okay if I turn it, or what is, what is your preference?
Whatever, yeah.
I don't know if you can see it, you're welcome to take it as long as you return it. But, just if you can see...
I wouldn't do that with this council.
So, this is just in the parking lot, I didn't stage any of it. This is in the parking lot, facing toward there's cans. Can you see?
Chad could see.
Can you see?
Yeah, email it to mine, see, I have one of those.
Oh, yeah, I can, I could do that.
I can see it.
Okay. So, this is in the parking lot, it's got all the cans, all of the trash. There's a lot of trash over in the area, like at the corners. Can't really tell from distance, I know you can't tell from there, but it's the same thing where there's just trash in the parking lot. The handicap spaces all have trash, so if I were to stretch a little there, I could say someone would be getting out of their car and trip on it when they were trying to get out in a handicap space. And then just looking at the store, again, it's something you can't really tell from distance, but that's not that old. It's really not. It's definitely not taken care of. And just where it's just not been kept clean, there's dings in the, the side where there's been damage that's not been corrected. And this is in the bushes where there's trash. And this isn't just a select bush that I went, oh, good, there's trash, I'll take a picture of it. It's all of the bushes around the property. And this is just not something that we need or want in the Bethany area where we are, so another one too. So, I could hand this to you if you like, I know that's not very helpful from here. But, just that, it's not, I don't feel like it's a stretch to say this is a place that would really be an eyesore, that it would, I do not live across the street, but I know people who do and those houses that are right there. And that's not fair to them when it's really not something that we need. And there are other businesses that would be more appropriate for that, that don't necessarily need a rezoning for this to lean to a Dollar General. And, you know, I drive by it all the time, I think a lot of people do just in that vicinity. And it is, you know, it's an area that's gorgeous, it's an area that you drive through and it's beautiful. And you know we have a ton of cyclists in our county and they're coming through that area all the time and I bet that's one of their favorite areas, when they're finally out in the country and they can, you know, just enjoy the view while they're cycling. And that is all that I have for you, but would you like to see this closer? It is up to you.
I think everybody got the drift of it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? I didn't know if those were just sign, well, okay, I guess those were just holding up signs, yes, ma'am. And be sure to give name and address.
I'm Natalie McGill, one five-five-three North Highway one sixty-one. My family owns the McGill store that's right across the road from where they're talking about the Dollar General being. I've grown up right across the road as well, so it's nice living in a rural area. And I go to college at USC, so I know how living in a city also is too. And we chose to live out there, we could've moved somewhere else, but we don't. It just doesn't belong in that area at all. If we needed something, we don't mind driving to Walmart or another Dollar General nearby. Yeah, we just have farmland out there and that's just, the beauty of it is how simple it is, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Anybody for? Yes, sir.
Hi, Tim Heeline, twenty-six seventy-four Cozy Cove Drive. Like to begin, thank you for your services, I know these highly-paid jobs you have here tonight. That's why you're doing it, for the money, thanks for staff and the comments tonight, I can see their point. I've been involved with another rezoning of a Dollar General, I happen to own the property that it was sold on, on the corner of one sixty-one and Shiloh. A lot of the older Dollar Generals, they had trash issues. The newer Dollar Generals, the Dollar General doesn't own their properties, they're owned by investment companies. There's all kinds of businesses that have trash. All people have to do is call county, we're a complaint-driven county and they're pretty good about dealing with that. I just had some notes here. You know, one of the things that was mentioned was schools. You've got a school seven hundred, six hundred, seven hundred yards away. That school is built with taxpayers' money, not for the kids that are there, it's for the future. The new school just up the road, three and a half miles away, several million dollars that everybody in here paid for, it's beautiful. That's not for the kids that are here today, it's for, a lot of it's for the future. I sell a lot of real estate in Western York County and there's a demand for it. Clover's, the east side of Clover's getting busy, Fort Mill's getting busy, the push is coming out west. Dollar General, when they do go to rezon properties, they get this kind of feedback from folks and I, I understand that. But, the one we did on the corner of Shiloh and one sixty-one had the same kind of response. Everybody that was against that now uses that store and they like it. They don't, the trash is not out, they keep their bins closed. But, you've just, you've got more people, you've got more people coming this way. McGill's, they don't have any intention to hurt McGill's, McGill's store's been there forever, it's gonna be there forever. They've got a restaurant there, I eat there. I think I told you, you need to raise your prices because your sandwiches are so big and so good. But, there's a demand for that. With the Dollar Generals, there is a demand for convenience in, in the country. They've got stores, I wanted to show that, they've got some country themed, you could call it, I guess. I'll just, oh, just, just one at a time, I guess. That's a Hardy board front on a, on a metal building is one that they can build and just go down the line there. It's another Hardy board, country theme. Can't see that one good. That's the one on Ebenezer by the Kentucky Fried Chicken by, I believe, what on, by Heckle and it's, it's not your standard brick Dollar General and they can do that store on that corner. They do try and fit into the community. If they weren't a fit in, in these country settings, they wouldn't be out there, they wouldn't be doing as well. If people don't wanna shop at them, that's their choice. I think the store is gonna bring a lot more business to McGill's. Activity breeds activity, you have banks on corners across from each other, automobile dealerships, gas stations, ton of gas stations, restaurants, churches, that whole intersection is zone BD one. In BD one zoning, I brought the list of what can go in BD one and it's quite a bit. But, one of the things that really sticks out is in BD one zoning, you can do convenience stores. I think if you ask most people out there, what is a Dollar General, they're gonna call it a convenience store. Because by York County's definition of convenience stores, it doesn't fit into BD one, you have to go to BD three because they call it a general mercantile store. Someone could argue that, should it be allowed in BD one? In BD one, you can build a Lowe's, a Home Depot, a Walmart, a Kmart, big stores and they wouldn't have to ch- come in here and talk to any of you that asked to do that. It wouldn't fit there, but they wouldn't have to ask. They'd have to get their building approved, but it's approved there. That lot is six and a half acres, they're not gonna subdivide that lot at all. It's got over seven hundred foot of road frontage on fifty-five, they're gonna put it about in the middle of it. They're gonna disturb maybe two acres of ground, they're gonna leave a large buffer. Mrs. Param, what she was saying about her house, they're gonna leave a big tree buffer back there. Her house is across from the county recycling center and then also another tract of land there that's got all kinds of junk, which I don't know how that land is allowed to have that, I think there should be a complaint there. If I was McGill's, I'd be more concerned about someone coming in and wanting to do something different like a, a gas station. If that would come in, that would put a big hurt on them. As far as traffic, I hear that a lot about properties I rezon. And the, no, no, they're not gonna get any more traffic. People don't go from York to, to the, a new Dollar General because they have a new widget on sale. They all have the same product and it's daily goods that a lot of people use. So, you're not gonna, the traffic is there for the existing people and the people that are coming. You hear about the, you know, I talked about the Walmart-Lowe's syndrome, when the big box stores come into town, people say, well, I'm not shopping there, it's gonna hurt this store, it's gonna hurt that store. People shop them. The one we did out at one sixty-one, all the folks said they weren't gonna go shopping there. And I ran into the biggest person that was against that rezoning just last week. My daughter and I were out to dinner and I asked him, you know, can I ask you now that that Dollar General's been there for two years, do you go in there? He goes, yeah, I go in there. And his big concern was trash, just like what was mentioned, and that door's being left open and it's not allowed. I said, Tim, they did a real good job, and he goes, we all use it. So, I, I hear the comments, I do have feeling towards them, but I know that store's gonna be used by people out there and the people that don't wanna use it, don't need to use it. As far as lighting goes, I heard about the lights, they do down lighting, they are, believe it or not, very neighborhood-friendly. The trash is a big deal to them and all someone's gotta do is file a complaint and it goes to the, the owner gets, you know, they're the ones that have to take care of that. Dollar General's just a tenant, they don't own any of their real estate. But, that, I think that's about, I think that's the gist of it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in favor? Have a motion to close?
Move to close, second.
Discussion, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, do we have a new motion?
Make a motion to approve with conditions that I'd like to read in for sake of discussion at this point. But, staff recommending conditions are limited uses to general merchantile only, no outdoor storage, trash enclosure doors... storage, trash enclosure doors must be muddling painted to match the color of the structure. And also I want to add, and I spoke with staff about this today, that the exterior must be hardy plank country store design and not a brick or block building design.
We have a second.
Can I say something or do I have to wait?
We'll wait for the second.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Love.
So, I'm sorry, Tim, I'm not gonna be with you on this one because I know that Dollar General is the first one in. So there may be a Lowe's in the future or a Home Depot and a Walmart, all of those things in the future. But the problem that I have with Dollar General, this is not my district, but I've had a lot of calls because people thought it was my district. And so the, the problem with the Dollar General is they, they jump out way ahead of everybody else. So they're what I call a can opener. They open up the can of worms and then that's what starts attracting more businesses and things as we go. But it may be, I mean, it could be a good six, seven, eight years before the next business comes in. And, and these people are faced just looking at this, at this Dollar General, which I don't feel like is, is the best thing there. The other side of the coin is you've got a person who owns that property who would like to sell it. My job, I feel like, is to please, I can't please all of the people all the time, but I feel like my job is to please the majority of the people most of the time. So I'm not gonna support this at all.
Mr. Winkler in the office.
Couple of things. One, I'm a little surprised to hear Ms. McGill here today because I did go eat lunch at McGill's on Friday and spoke with some of the family members at McGill's. And they told me that they did not think it would hurt their business, that they actually felt like the traffic and the other people there would probably help the business because they don't sell the same things that McGill's does. Plus, it would bring a few more people by the, the restaurant side of it that would be able to see that they now have a restaurant counter, which they opened last year. They didn't have the first 120 years or so, but now they have a restaurant counter. So I was told in the store that they, one, they didn't love it, but I was told they would much rather have that than a gas station or a QT because that would put them out of business, is what the McGill's told me. Because the gas is one of their pulls in that area. And a gas station can be put in there under the current zoning without them coming before us. And so I was a little confused when Ms. McGill came up and spoke against it since I had spoke to some of the family. And that was one of the things we had talked about because I, I talked to them, I introduced myself, told them who I was and that I, you know, wanted to ask them. And I apologized to Ms. Perrin, I did see the online petition, but I was running a little short on time by the time I got through talking to the McGill's and I didn't get stopped by your house to try to say hey to you, but I know where you live because I am out there a good bit at the tractor show, different things. The online petition, it, it's a good number of names on that petition and stuff, but in, in flipping through it very quickly, I saw Cramerton, North Carolina, Marietta, Ohio, Naples, Florida, Lincolnon, North Carolina, and other areas that weren't just South Carolina on that online petition. And so, but there were a lot that were local and I understand that, I saw that. You know, staff in our land use, comprehensive land use plan, we approved and staff said that, you know, that area is a rural center area. That's a major, what's considered a major intersection in that area with traffic lights and that is a, an area that they say is a rural community, rural center area where a Dollar General would fit in. And they think that's, that's the type thing to go, that's why staff recommended approval. Because of all of that and with those conditions, I will support it for second reading. I would like to ask something that I asked of Mr. Heeline on a previous one, which we did not support and did vote now, but I spoke to some of the firefighters at Bethany Santiago Fire Department. Several of them told me that they would not do anything that would, would not support anything that they thought would hurt the McGill's or the McGill family, but they felt like that it probably was, was something that the community could use. But I, I would like to see if we could either in the fire department or there's a church between McGill's Corner and Bethany Santiago Fire Department, if we could set up something between now and the next reading maybe to do a little community get together and let you and the developer all come as well, address any other concerns they may have before the third reading. If we make it to a third reading.
Mr. Roddy.
First of all, I want to say I do appreciate the effort by the young lady who went out and secured the signatures. I know how tough that is to, to round up people, to, to stop them in the middle of whatever they're doing around town to get, get signatures. That was a, a very commendable effort to get, I think she said over 500 signatures and I, I don't think that includes what was online as well. I'll just start off by saying, my decision to support or not to support won't be based on whether this business will hurt or help another business. I think we're in, we're in the business of doing what's right for the community because I think if we start looking at what helps a business, what hurts a business, then we get into the business of picking winners and losers. And I don't think that's what my job is, to pick a winner or pick a loser. This Dollar General thing here in the county has, is, it comes, we see probably one every three, four, five months and we hear the same concerns. We do have some real nice ones in the area and we do have some real trashy ones in the area. And I think a lot of that is predicated on the area that they're choosing. The ones in Rock Hill, that's in the heart of Rock Hill, I think they do a tremendous job of making sure they keep it clean, keep it fresh looking. Especially the one over on Ebenezer's, one of the fairly new ones, they'd move from across the street into this own independent building. I think they do a great job, it has a nice little country looking feel to it. But then you come on the outskirts of some of the ones that's in some of the rural areas and those are some of the ones that really are not being taken care of. And I think, I think that falls into a category that, that clumps everybody in together with a certain brand, a certain store level. It's unfortunate that the, the lack of at one location pulls down the possibility of another location, but that's just human nature. And looking at some of the alternatives that can come there, that, that has me puzzled. But still going back to what the community is saying, you know, sometimes we have to pick, we have to side with, with business or we have to side with the community. And I think a lot of times, we don't do as good a job as we should do when it comes to what the citizens are speaking up for. This is always a tough decision to, to support one way or to deny it the other way. You know, but apparently someone sees an opportunity to, to make some money by scouting that location, proposing to put one there and, and Dollar General has been kind of on the cutting edge of moving some of these stores out into the rural area. Apparently they're making money, that's the reason they want to come here, they see a potential to make money. But I have to, you know, look away from that part to see what's best for the community. You know, when we doing rezoning, you know, it's not our job to, to pick a winner or pick a loser, say it's gonna help a business or hurt another business. And it's always, it's always a tough one and I know Tim's gonna do a, 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 a good job of trying to reach out to the community to try to address their concerns. I've worked with him on, on several other projects. He, he will do that if, if, if that's what Rob is asking him to do. It's, it's always tough when you get a community of people with 500 signatures saying, we don't want this. Now, I'll admit, we've, we've approved Dollar Generals in areas that people say we want them. We've approved, approved Dollar Generals in areas where people say we don't want them. And sometimes we've gotten that, that same thing that he mentioned on 161 where the people that were against it end up loving it. And in some cases, some people that wanted one, saying, man, I wish we wouldn't have supported that one. So it's, it's a mixed bag of, a mixed bag of emotions on, do you do it or do you don't? But at the end of the day, I'll make my decision based on what's best for that surrounding community and not what's best for a particular business or a particular individual or if there's a profit to be made. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a tough one. I'm still kind of processing my thought as to whether this would be a good fit for this community.
Anybody else?
I'd ask.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Winkler, there was a fourth condition that staff had recommended, which was the applicant would provide architectural renderings prior to the third reading. Will you make that a part of your motion?
I'd be glad to, but I believe.
He kinda made that four condition more of that, but it's more specific. He just took that one and made it more specific.
I just want to make sure that there are renderings because.
Agreed.
That's going to have a good bit of influence in how I, I'd like to see what it is they're looking at, what I'm looking at. And also is there any, I, I, I'll support this for second reading, but at third reading, since this land is not going to be subdivided, I'd like that to be a part of this. That we're not gonna see all of a sudden this be subdivided and this all of a sudden you have one general mercantile and all of a sudden you have a whole lot more right there. I, I think that's something to certainly consider moving forward since that is something the applicant is willing to do.
If that's, I mean, the applicant has stated it, so.
Indeed restricted that it won't be subdivided at all. I'd be glad to accept that as.
As part of the conditions?
As one of the conditions.
All right, so just.
Thank you, sir.
The record show they added conditions, please.
Second and seventh condition of that.
Who was the second?
I think Michael did.
Oh Chad, were you the second?
I did.
Okay, so you're good?
I, I, yeah.
Okay, and then Mr. Williams.
Yeah, and that's, the reason I seconded is because the, Mr. Winkler has in previous iterations offered to meet with the, the community because I, I too would like to gauge, you know, exactly, I saw some, a bunch of local people here, but I saw some, some, some others. And I think the, you know, the meeting that you had with that other one, it came out very clearly what the community wanted and we did and we followed that. And I, I think that, that we ought to take the opportunity to do it here as well because I, I, and I got some folks that I know that live out there that I would like to, to talk to. But like Mr. Johnson, I want to support it for second reading because there's, there's no chance to, to, to do it. If not, I guess a couple of the comments that Mr. Heeline, Heeline made, the fact that a Lowe's can go there in BD3 now, kinda, and a gas station, that, you know, that, that's an interesting argument. BD1, yeah, can, can go there now. And, uh, just, and, and the fact that it's two numbered highways, you know, if, if you're not gonna put it in the, you know, where, where are you gonna put it if we don't put it there? So I do think there's some things that, that deserve listening to before third reading, so I will support it for second reading for that purpose.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Hand count, all those in favor, ma'am?
She got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, consider second reading in public hearing, case number 1709 to rezon from UD to RC2. This is, everybody up here knows about what we're doing here. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody here want to speak in favor? Move to close. Oh, it's that Penny Lane in the Rock Hill community? Sorry.
I lost you.
Yeah, sorry about that. That happens to me a lot.
I'm Jeremy, I'm the owner of that property. I just took on, uh, two plots there. Uh, the reason I want to get that changed is because I'm just trying to fit into my environment. Everything there, I own the trailers, I've cleaned them up since September. I know Chad personally, we are both on loan care companies. He knows that anything I'm gonna put on there is gonna be nice and it's not gonna be trashy. And if anything, it's gonna be better than the community has now. I mean, every property I bought since, getting this up, you know, the other one come with two trailers on it. I've remodeled the trailers, I painted them, I've cool sealed them. It was just in total disarray when I bought it. On the opposite side of the road, I'm trying to buy two houses there to clean up, to get to my property to make it look better so when you get to my property. So that's just really where I just wanted to speak, that, you know, I'm gonna make the, the community better. I'm working on my land to make my land look better than the rest. So maybe they decide that they want to live like I do. Maybe they don't and I'll put Leland Cypressus all the way down my five acres, I don't know. But I know that whatever you decide today or whenever, that I'm gonna have it the nicest I can have it. And I will take care of it. And as I've been told before, this was a mistake that it's even in UD, it should have been in residential all along, so. And in a year, this would have got changed, but I had to pay to get this. But my whole point is, is everything I have, yeah, I'm cheap, Chad, everything I have there, I have took care of and will begin and keep as of it is, better than it was when I got there. So that's all I can say and I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, thank you, Jeremy. And I think we had, anybody else in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item. Okay, Mr. Williams. Consider second reading in public hearing, case number 1710, to rezon from AGC to PD in RUD1 at 2651 McConnell's Highway in the Rock Hill Community.
Move to approve with.
Wait a minute, we gotta have the public hearing.
On public hearing.
Yeah. All those against this, anybody against this? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Be sure to give your name and address.
I'm Sylvia Berry and I live at 1616 Herndon Farm Road. This is in my back door. I was here a couple of months ago when you changed the front, now it's the back. You know, my, my thought when we moved out there was that we were moving to the country, evidently not. That's basically all I have to say because I didn't plan to say anything, but I guess I'm just moved because of what's happening. I would prefer it staying the same, but of course it's left up to, to you, but it's been agriculture. We see the trees. Now I guess it's gonna be housing development. But I just wanted to share that, I'm very much opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Anybody in favor? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Boyd, 6816 Orlando, Florida, hanging on road Orlando, Florida. I'm the applicant here on behalf of the owner. My mother's Gail Boyd and my brother here's Clay Boyd. We grew up on this property. It's part of the original Herndon Farm. Actually, a piece, a large piece of it is part of the original Herndon Heritage Development, but, which was platted in a manner that makes it really not, it's no longer really connected to Herndon Heritage the way that was platted. This is a simple rezoning to RUD1 to provide one acre lots. The potential for one acre lots compatible with, with what was done in Herndon Heritage. There's no plan to develop it at this point. We're simply trying to sell the property so my mother can move. So we'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve with conditions and if you.
You read, yeah, you have to read them.
Okay, all right. Approve with conditions, prior to preliminary plat being submitted for review and approval, the applicant shall submit the site plan and design building standards, including but not limited to setbacks, garage location, minimum square footage for residential units, building materials, buffers and accessory uses for the review and approval of county council.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
Just like Mr. Boyd mentioned, there's not a buyer or developer interested in the property right now, they're going through the rezoning, but look to, for a, a buyer to possibly put some residential homes. It does not have a connection to the Herndon Heritage, so they won't be using, if someone was to develop it, there's not an access point now that connects this property to Herndon Heritage. But some of the conditions that, that could possibly come up down the road would be similar to what Herndon already has in place. And the reason why I mention that is because we do want to make sure that any residential homes that may be proposed to be developed in the future would be comparable to what's already out there. We can't put those in place right now because there's no site plan, there's no developer, there's no buyer. But that's why we put it, that the, for any, any buyer or any developer that comes for it later, that this condition, that they must come back to county council to meet these conditions or present these conditions for county council's approval. That way county council still has a say whether it's next month, next year, five years later, county council still has that discretion to put some measures in place that do protect the home values and, and the integrity of kind of what's going on in the area out that way.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, consider second reading, public hearing, case number 1711, rezon from AGC to RUD at 4879 Steel Village Road in the Rock Hill Community. Anybody here want to speak against? Speak against? Anybody in favor?
Move to close.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, next item, Cummings to present, Jim. Uh, construction update. Give us some good news.
Thank you, good evening, I, I hope to. Um, we're pleased to be here tonight to present, this, we're saying monthly, we put these together monthly, but we're gonna be presenting quarterly. Um, we're gonna, if you would refer to tab section one, and I'll start with most justice. Uh, phase one, this is a multi-phase project. Phase one is, uh, well underway. Um, the parking lot would be, will be blacktopped, uh, this week, actually starting paving it tomorrow, more than likely it'll be complete tomorrow, then they'll stripe it out, following week should be able to use. Um, at that point, we'll be able to, um, really hit, do the demo of the, the existing parking lot, so we can get the parking deck installed. So, that's our process. Um, phase two package has been advertised. Um, we will receive bids on June the sixth, and we'll be bringing that for recommendation in June. I've got several photos, this is a, a picture of the rendering of the front. Uh, this is a shot of phase one work. So, right now, this is parking, this is the parking lot that they'll be paving tomorrow. Uh, we're relocating some, uh, there's a good bit of, uh, infrastructure here, water lines, we're relocating those now. They'll be going all the way around the building. Um, this tunnel is a prerequisite before the deck, then we'll get the deck installed, um, so that it'll be ready to go for phase two.
So, any, sir? I'm sorry, I thought you were jumping to the next one, so.
No, and this is just an action shot. Um, this was last week, although we've got stone installed. Um, you can see here, stones has, stone has been installed, sealed up, um, so the rain would not interfere with it this weekend, and, uh, starting to pave it, uh, tomorrow. So, is there a question?
Well, I was just gonna say just that, before you go to the next one. Any questions on this one? No, sir? Right ahead.
Um, and I've got an aerial photograph, we do aerials of each project on a monthly basis, just so you can have a time lapse type of, of a view, a bird's eye view. This is the parking lot, this is the area where the parking deck will be located. The tunnel will be going right here to furnace, and it's for transportation to get inmates or in defendants from the holding area into the court, the future court. Our next project is the, speaking of court, the family court, uh, heckle facility.
We started clearing the land for that one?
Yes, we, we started clearing land. Uh, it's very similar to phase one, uh, it's a little cleaner. Uh, so, once we get the phase one, the trees out, um, we will be, um, we're gonna be doing that project in milestones. So, the building pad will be turned over prior to the completion of the entire phase one, uh, site prep. Uh, that way, we can get the, um, the bill, the phase two contractor on board. And we are advertising the, the phase two, May twenty-sixth, and we'll be receiving the bids on the twenty-ninth of June, to, uh, and be bringing forward to you in July. Uh, right now, we are running our, our DD and CD estimates are, uh, under budget, I'm pleased to say. Uh, and we'll add a caveat to that once we get a little bit further in, into the project. We've got several, um, into the report, we've got several photos. This is a different perspective than I think I presented before. Um, this would be Main Street, and then the actual heckle is back here. We're gonna, the intent of this, uh, campus redevelopment is to kinda flip the campus, so that this is now your main access point, and more of your service access would be on the, although it'd still be at heckle, uh, that would, that would remain open. But this would be, uh, driving your, what you'd like to be bringing your, customers, your staff, uh, and whatnot. This is a, kind of a highlight of the phase one work, and all the site work. Main Street, everything highlighted is clear, being cleared, those are construction limits. So we'll be clearing, moving soil, park, prepping up for parking lots and, and to extend that driveway. Uh, Clover and Fort Mill Magistrates, um, this is for later, uh, project bids tomorrow. Uh, that's a project that we've been concerned with, with interest. Uh, we do, we did have four bidders until, um, Saturday. We confirmed, as of this morning, three bidders. Um, CD estimate is forecasting under budget, but I, there could be a fifteen percent fluctuation. Um, so we're, we're concerned, but we're optimistic. Um, but we anticipate making award in June.
So with all the construction booming going on, you still feel like we'll be good to, you know, budget?
So far, and I, and I, there's, when we get to recycling center, I wanna, I wanna give you a good example of where the market is. It's, it's really a, it's an, well, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about it when we get there. Uh, new administration, uh, we received two bids on May ninth. That's, to your point, uh, Mr. Chair, that's not what you normally see. When we bid the recycling, we had six. This is, for practical purposes, is the keystone of this building program, and, uh, we had a limited amount of contractors. Now, we had a good amount of, uh, coverage with the submarket, which is the critical part. That's, you know, that really drives the numbers. Um, we are currently conducting all our due diligence, and we will be making award, recommending for award on the June fifth. Uh, once we do make this award, you'll have about one point two million dollars left in your budget for furnishing, which is an adequate amount to, uh, with relocating your servers from this, uh, facility into that. So, it, uh, it bid higher than what we thought it would bid, but it's still within budget.
And with the bid you got, is there any, I mean, you were expecting maybe four or so?
I would have thought we would have had five or six. And we were out, we have a huge database of contractors and subcontractors, and we worked the phones, calling, drumming up interest, uh, and, um, it's people have, one of the reasons these contractors aren't bidding, it's not that they're interested, but they're booked up and their binding capacity is limit, is, is maxed out. And they just can't take on more work until they relieve work. And so, that's a, uh, that's a problem. So, um, and it's gonna be a problem for several years.
The economy gets bad again?
Well, or we get more people into the market, and that's the biggest thing. We lost twenty-five percent of the workforce when the, with recession, and they just haven't come back. We've had a slingshot effect.
Are you happy with the two bids you got?
Ye- yes, yes. Our next project is, uh, the Public Works, and this is what we're calling the Support Facilities. Uh, we are currently in the bidding phase. Uh, we will receive bids on May twenty-fifth. Our CD estimate is tracking below budget, um, and we anticipate making an award for, for June fifth. This is a multi-phase project, it's fairly large. We're, have been, uh, meeting with construct, doing constructibilities and meeting with architects, to kind of change some different types of methods and, um, materials to, to make sure that we're, it's affordable and affordable. Public Works Recycling Center, this one I want to spend just a few minutes on. Uh, you've already awarded this project, it, it came in under budget, but you bid this project in roughly two thousand thirteen. Uh, it, it didn't go forward. Uh, the project, when we took it over, same location, we just had to update the codes. Uh, when it was bid previously, it was around three and a half million dollars. Apples to apples, we're at four point nine million dollars, with six bidders. So that's over seven percent per year, um, almost a forty percent increase. And it's not immaterial, it's been driven by labor costs. So, those are, we're within budget here, and we're fine. But, uh, we built that in, um, on most of them, but that is more than what we thought it would be. So, and it's, it's, it's just market saturation.
I don't want to back you up, but was it the scale of the project that?
I think some of it.
Is on the admin?
Well, scale of it, it's, you know, again, it goes back to, you know, you, you, you're pulling from a different contractor, too, a smaller project. And this was a five million dollar project, you got, uh, five, and it may be, you know, a lot of people that were just probably tipping off their, uh, maxing out their budget. This was something they could, I mean, their bonding, they could get in, whereas they can't get a twenty-five million dollar, twenty-two million dollar, twenty-one million dollar project. So, it's, um, but we're cautious, but we've been cautious since we've started this program. Uh, we knew it was coming. Um, key is getting these projects bid as soon as we can. Um, incidentally, phase two, which is the equipment component, uh, I understand is, we're kind of in an inverse market with, uh, process equipment. Uh, it's, it's not a, a big demand right now, uh, and so, uh, we're anticipating having bids at or below what we will receive, what the county received in two thousand thirteen. Uh, with that, that, well, I do have a schedule. Um, the schedule redline represents today. It's a accurate, uh, representation of your build, bidding, your building program. Um, and we feel comfortable with schedule. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Questions, Mr. Johnson?
Are we on schedule? Are there any projects you're, we're not on schedule?
We have, there's a couple that we are behind schedule, they were due to changes in the scope of work. For example, the, the, um, Family Court, uh, we can't make that time back up. There's, you know, so it's, it's just slid, but we have not had any other interruptions.
What, what was the other one?
Really, that's the only one. Heckle is another, we had to peel that one off, because we, we haven't finalized that, that, but we're gonna handle that as a phase three.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it. Uh, next item, consider third reading, case number seventeen oh two, re, uh, re- Okay. Okay. Mr. Johnson recused himself. Uh, rezon from RD two to BD three, at eighteen seventy Cole Thorpe Road in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? To circle around, Mr. Johnson? Okay, now, Robert, you can circle around. Uh, consider third reading, case number seventeen oh five, rezon from RUD to Light Industrial at James Harvey Road in the York community. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Come back, Robert. Next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between SP Rock Hill Legacy LLC, the company in York County, South Carolina, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the company, and providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu, lieu of ad lorm taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the, the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no, next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between SP Rock Hill Legacy One LLC, a company known for the time being as SP Rock Hill Tenant, collectively the companies in York County, South Carolina, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the companies, and providing for payment by the companies of certain fees in lieu of ad lorm taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Can we put these?
Yes, Ms. Cox, I'm sorry.
Can we put these on consent agenda?
Yeah, that's, uh, that might be a wise thing.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Oh, so probably don't need to. Okay, I got, so we can do both, then. Set for the public hearing, then it can't be consent agenda. Okay, gotcha.
Going forward.
Yeah.
We can just, gotcha. Uh, council to consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing it, oh, we didn't vote?
No, we didn't vote.
I'm sorry, you interrupted my train of thought, Ms. Cox.
I was waiting for discussion.
All right. Um, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no, next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Riverwalk McCraney Building LLC, the company, in York County, South Carolina, the county, whereby the county will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the company, and providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of ad lorm taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no, next item, council to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, chapter thirty-one, sections thirty-one point two zero through thirty-one point two six, in order to require compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act FOIA, to require county boards and commissions to notify the public information officer or employee responsible for FOIA when receiving a FOIA request, to remove language inconsistent with FOIA, to define public record, to require public notice of FOIA, to allow for collection of costs to fulfill requests, to provide for records retention, to clarify exceptions, allowing certain organizations to obtain records without submitting a FOIA request, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no, next item, council to consider amending in second reading of an ordinance to allow for the tax assessor to refund the county government portion of an overpaid property taxes for illegal residents identified as tax map number six-three-six-zero-one-zero-three-zero-three-three, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Now, should, now should this read per our, the four-year thing for what we decided?
That's what it reads now.
Sir?
That's how it reads now.
Yeah, okay, so that'd be clarified and reading into the record? Michael?
Amending.
You, you can clarify.
Two asterisks down there if you want to read them.
So, well, anyway, are we good with the?
The amendment is to add two years of what the assessor's already granted for the direction of his last meeting.
Okay, so it's a four-year thing, the way the motion read, we're, we're okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, well, we actually hadn't had the motion, I'm sorry. Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy?
Um, well, I'm not quite finished beating this little drum to support this taxpayer. I'm sure you all knew it was coming, so just sit back and relax a little, give me a minute. Um, you know, several people have questioned, if we go down this road, will we open up a windfall of residents coming in saying, hey, I was overcharged, or I'm, I'm due a refund for four years, five years, six years. And, when we went, first went down this road looking at the ten-year overpayment situation for this taxpayer, you know, that came into question, well, how many people are out there who will come forward and just rob the county of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars that was betrayed the night I wasn't here to speak on behalf of this taxpayer? As it comes out, I've called the assessor's office every single week to find out, has anyone else come up and say, you know, hey, I've been, I've been paying too much for the last six years, I've been paying too much for the last eight years. No one has called. Mr. Chairman, you've received one email, Mr. Johnson received one phone call, pretty much that's it. So the concern that this is gonna open up the county coffers and cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, just isn't there. And I'll always like to err on the side of the citizen. You know, pretty much, that's why I'm up here, to make sure we're doing right by them. Because, all too often, we've, we've sat here and told people, if we could do this for you, we would, but the law doesn't allow us to do it. Here's a situation that the law allows us to do it, and we're not gonna do it. You know, this young lady's overpaid someone to tune of seven thousand dollars in overpayments. She's received the two years' overpayments already, because the state requires us to do it. It wasn't York County's good faith effort to say, we'll do it. The state requires us to do a minimum of two years, but it also allows us to go back with the discretion as far as we want to go. And, she's proven that she's lived in the house since two thousand five, she's overpaid all the way up. The only thing she's done was just paid the taxes that were sent to her mortgage company. Karen, will you put the, up on the screen? So I have a little slide here that shows, can you blow it up in? The slide shows what the county's portion of the ten-year overpayment will be. And this is gonna blow your socks off, because it's only a thousand and seven bucks. We're spending tons of time disputing whether we should give her back the county's portion for a ten-year overpayment of only a thousand seven dollars and fifty cent. That's ludicrous considering, we're sitting up here going back and forth over one thousand dollars to this taxpayer. Going forward, when we change the, the ordinance that's gonna cap it off at four years, this prevents all those concerns that Mr. Johnson had the first meeting, saying this is gonna open up the county coffers, the floodgates are gonna be open, people are gonna be waving the tax bill, saying, I was overcharged, I want my, my money. We can't put, we shouldn't be limiting what we refund her now, because that four-year situation hasn't went into effect. I think I used analysis last time, that if someone committed a crime, and they were sentenced under a current rule that gave them twenty years in prison, six months later, the rule changed that only gave them five years in prison. We don't go back and, and redo that person's sentence, because they were sentenced under the current rule. They don't get that leniency to go back and say, hey, the rules have changed, let this guy out of prison. So, the precedent that we're setting by doing this won't exist for anyone else coming forward after we approved the four-year limit. And it takes me back to, when some of you guys weren't even on council, we had a situation come up where we discovered, uh, taxes weren't paid on a piece of property, we were able to go back and charge this gentleman ten years of taxes. He had to pay those ten years of taxes for a trailer that wasn't his, but set on his property. The statute allowed us to go back a maximum of ten years. We went back ten years. A year and a half later, the statute changed, we were only able to go back three years. We can't, that guy can't come back to this chamber and say, hey, wait, y'all made me pay ten years, the laws changed. pay ten years, the laws changed, I need my other seven years back. He had to pay based on what the current statute read, and we charged him what the current statute said. So I said all that to say this, there's no limit on how far we can go back. She's proven that she's been in the home ever since day one, she hasn't moved out, she's gotten documentation from the city of Rock Hill, she's gotten documentation from an insurance company, she's lived there. So if she's due a refund, why not give her a thousand dollars back out of what she's overpaid? Because that's not our money. And the same goes if we were to discover that she owed us for ten years, you best believe if the statute says we could go back ten years, we'd be lined up knocking on her door saying, you owe us ten years. So my thing is, we're up here for the citizens, and we all want to do right by the citizens, but at the end of the day, if we're going to fight over one thousand dollars of county taxpayer dollars and only going back an additional two years, now cuts that down to two hundred bucks? This is close to highway robberies you can get because if I went to a store and purchased something and I was overcharged and I went back with my receipt, saying, hey, I was overcharged, the owner's, he's not within his right to say, okay, well, I'm only going to give you back twenty percent of what you overpaid, you know, let's be fair to her and give her back what she's overpaid. And if you look, the school district portion of her overpayment, the school district portion alone is thirty-three hundred dollars in thirty-three sixty-nine fifty-three. The two combined between the city of Rock Hill and York County is only twenty-four hundred bucks. Now, she's willing to accept what we're putting on the table in a ten-year, which only gives her twenty-four hundred bucks. The school district still gets to keep an additional overpayment of thirty-three hundred bucks. This, what we're about to try to do is offer her basically two hundred bucks of county money, two hundred and forty bucks of city money, and tell her, thank you, have a good day. Now, if you tell, if you sit here and tell me this is fair to any taxpaying citizen in York County, then I will argue tooth and nails till the cows come home because this is not right because if it's your son, if it was your daughter sitting out there in the same situation, or even if it was you sitting out there, we shouldn't be telling our citizens, this is fair. But the law gives us the latitude to go back to ten years. And if she's due a refund, which she clearly is, the county manager signed off on it initially, the assessor signed off on it initially. And at the end of the day, we have forty freaking million dollars sitting in the bank, and we are so scared to give her one thousand dollars. That is not right. You know, if this chamber was full like it was earlier, if we would have polled everyone out there, is it right for us to give her two hundred bucks? I bet you everybody would have said, heck, no. She's due her money back. If she hadn't lived in the house and she's not due a refund, don't give her anything. But she's lived in the house, why we can't give her the full amount? And I would challenge any one of you sitting up here who don't want to give her the full refund, to state your reason, go on the record and say, this is why we're not going to do it. Because it, one, is not going to hurt us financially, and, two, it's the right thing to do. And for a thousand bucks of county money, if we reduce to two years, it reduces what the city's going to pay her back. And that drastically reduces what would be a total of six, looked like six thousand some odd dollars, almost seven thousand dollars in overpayment. And if we cut back to two years, she's only going to get two hundred bucks from York County out of a thousand, she's only going to get two hundred and eighty bucks out of fourteen hundred bucks from the city of Rock Hill. She is not set to get any of that thirty-three sixty-nine fifty-three from the school district. Now, you tell me how it's just sending a message to our citizens that York County can be fair when it's possible? Because we've sat here and lied to people and told them, if we can do this for you, we would, but the state law doesn't allow us, the county statute doesn't allow. But we're sitting here tonight, and the state law gives us latitude to do this. So we telling her, take two hundred bucks of the county money and go on about your business. And I'll fight till the cows come home. This is not right by this taxpayer, and it does not open up a can of worms for us going forward. So that's my speech and spiel, and we've given everybody else some latitude when they brought situations to us, and I'll just beg the council to not implement just doing the two years. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we remove the additional two-year statute to fully refund her the four ten years. I may not get a second, but I want this taxpayer to know, I'm going to fight for her, I want the citizens of York County to know, I'll fight for them. And so I make that in the motion that we remove the two-year provision to refund her the four ten years.
You getting ready to say something?
Yes, sir. There's a motion on already for debate, so you're moving to amend?
Moving to amend.
The main motion?
You beat me to it. So do we have a second on the amended motion? All righty, then, we're back to the original motion.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot again to try to explain it.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, interestingly enough, during the public comments before, they said to take the motions out of it and do the right thing. And with, at the first vote that I read, that's exactly, it was my emotions, which is what wanted me to give the money back. I do want to give the money back. The problem is, is the precedent it sets. Like it or not, we set precedents. And it is, the thing that I was looking for, and I tried to talk myself into the first reading, is the extraordinary reason that the taxes weren't paid, that the, I'm sorry, other folks are talking, I'm getting confused. Yeah, four percent. The application for homestead extension wasn't filed, and there wasn't one. So that opens us up to everybody that has never done that, whether they realize it now or not, to come back. And that's my position, and that's what changed my mind.
Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Now, this is the amended?
No, there was no.
No, this is, that didn't come about. So this is back to the two extra years, four-year total. So question on that motion, the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Okay, so we're going to have a hand.
Confused. Four years, we just voted on four years.
We're voting on the four-year thing that you proposed last week. That's the motion. So, those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, those opposed, no. Okay. You get it? Okay, next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of approximately four million, I mean, yeah, four million eighteen thousand general obligation refunding bonds of twenty-seventeen of York County to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider amending and giving second reading of an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and seventeen, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and seventeen, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds to establish and fund a reserve account pursuant to the millage cap, exception with Section six-one-three-twenty, South Carolina Code of Laws, and to provide for other fiscal matters related to county government.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, new business. Jerry? Yes, sir. Jerry Helms, Pennies for Progress for Commission Chairman, to present the selected roads for the Pennies for Progress for referendum. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Jerry R. Helms, five-thirty Riddle Mill Road, Lake Wally, South Carolina. Mr. Chairman, it's an honor to be here tonight before you and the county council for the fourth Pennies for Progress Commission.
We appreciate all the hard work y'all have been doing.
It's hard to believe it's been twenty years. It was about this day, if I went back and looked at my calendar, that a guy named Butch Honeycutt called me up at Carroll and said, Jerry, I'm chairman of the Rock Hill Chamber, need you to do me a little favor. We got a group trying to get some roads done. We don't know exactly what it's going to do, but said, if you'll go down to Rock Hill tonight and help us with it, said, I'd appreciate it and we'll be done. Well, as you know, I went down and we had a group of twelve, and they were working through the legislation. All the legislators and the mayor and everybody spoke to the county, to the cameras and the newspapers, and everybody left. And the lady that was in charge of the group, I missed the first meeting, said, okay, thank you, you guys can go home. And then I raised my hand and said, excuse me, we haven't done anything. And the question was, well, what are we supposed to do? I said, I think we need to make a roads list. And then I got the question, how do you do that? And I asked the county staff, do you have a map? You guys know something about roads? And then they scrambled and got an easel, and from there, we ended up with the first pennies for progress. I had the opportunity, which I have, this is my fourth time, I've worked with some wonderful people. The first group was Julian Dickerson from York, Hubert Graham, which is well-known, from Tiga K., Merrick King, David Anderson, Neil Welber. You heard me say this before, we were just off on an adventure. We were pioneers. We didn't have a map, we didn't have a compass, and nobody could point us in the right direction. But what we did have were good people, like we have here, who were determined to do what they could to make our county better and our roads safer. Well, the twelve-person commission evolved into a six-person commission, and I showed up for that first meeting, the Herald calling and said, you're on it. And when I walked in, Neil Welber and David Anderson were on the first group, and they said, oh, by the way, Jerry, you did good writing at the board and raising your hand, we're going to elect you chairman. I had no idea what I was getting into, but I don't regret any of it because we've all had battles and adventures. The thing I will say is, one of the things we did back then, which carries on, and I think we need to remember history, I did get the easel, and I did get the marker in the old days. In our first meeting, we spent three hours writing a vision, a mission, and a core belief statement. And why is that important? Those core beliefs especially, the vision is to be recognized as the best roads in the Carolinas. The mission is obviously to get the county council, the road projects to vote on, but the core beliefs still stand today. And if you don't look at them, I look at them all the time, and people in North Carolina from Gaston County who wish they could do it, they talk about it, that's safety, connectivity, prosperity, and quality of life. And this time, we added integrity to make sure that we did everything out in the open. Those of you that were around then remember that we won by less than three hundred votes. We had to put it together very quickly, the county had never done it, the estimates were rushed, but thank God, we did a few things right, especially on the gravel roads and got some support, and we won. And it changed things. The second one came along, and I was offered to do the chairmanship, but I, having dealt with the first one and the stress of that being closed, decided that we needed to come up with a strategy and tactics. And we learned something from the very first pennies for progress. People had lost their trust in the government to do what they say, and that's why they wouldn't vote yes. I learned the difference between sellability and votability. Sellability is when you go up to Clover Allison and you tell the people in Clover that you want to widen fifty-five out to the high school, and they get all excited about it, and they're going to vote. You go tell somebody in Rock Hill about it, and they'll say, that's a good idea, they sold, but they go, they go cut their grass, they go to the grocery store, et cetera. So what that evolved into is we realized that pennies for progress belongs to the citizens of York County. And if we were going to make it successful, we had to reach out to every community and find out their needs and to get their input. And we had to try to include every district and to hear from folks. And the second time, we, you know, again, we had one group, we met, and we came up with the list, and we looked to try to do it in every area, and then we went around and we met in Sharon, in York, in Clover, in Lake Wally, in Tiga K., Fort Mill, Rock Hill. And we said, these are our list, this is what we think, what do you do? We tried, they go, that's pretty good. And we got some suggestions, and we got better. We won by sixty-two and a half percent. Sounds all good and wonderful, doesn't it, until gas went crazy, or oil, and the oil prices went up, and we found out that you need some better expertise in getting the cost of the roads, and we had the overrun, which we had to work on. We still got sixty-two and a half percent, and thanks to a good county council and support and help, we were able to get those roads funded and most of them completed. Two thousand and eleven, we worked on our processes again. We go to Sharon, Clover, Hickory Grove, Lake Wally, Tiga K., Fort Mill, Rock Hill. This time, we say, tell us what roads you need, we'll build this list for you. And we did. And give us priority because we don't have money. We don't have unlimited money, and we didn't. And, but what we did is, we used that list, and we go back to our core beliefs of safety, prosperity, connectivity, quality of life, and we made the best judgment we could. And in the biggest recession we've ever seen, we got eighty-two-plus percent of the vote, which we can be very proud of. And the work to try to bring in the cost and to make sure that better estimates were there has put us on a much better path. Well, here we are again for the latest pennies for progress. You know, it hasn't always been easy. There were people that opposed it, you know, it's been tough trying to make that selection. But as my dad always said, you don't ever get ahead by doing what's easy, and other people want and can do, you get ahead by doing what's hard, and nobody can do or will attempt. And that's what we did with pennies for progress. This was a difficult decision this time, but we did the same thing. And before I present it to you, I wanted to talk about something that the commission will have to fix. And in the wording of the referendum, somehow, it was admitted that the cost of the utilities on the projects would be taken care of, that would be paid. We are prepared to meet next week to rectify that, make an amendment so that it all flows in full disclosure, so I wanted you guys to know that. But again, on this one, and I apologize if I had bronchitis, so if you hear wheezing, it's not that I'm an old guy, it's just kind of tough to breathe. The medicine, hopefully, in a day or two, will kick in. But once again, we went around, we went down to Sharon, and the first thing they go is, why are you here? You'll never do anything for us. Oh, yeah, we will. Put it in the box, we'll see, we'll take a look at it. We did the same thing all the way around the county, and we built our list. The first thing we found out is, I looked over at one of the guys, and I said, well, we knew it, we don't have near enough money to do what the county needs, so we're going to have to make some tough decisions. But we asked for input from the schools and the leadership and economic development and private citizens, and we built our list. And, you know, we asked for prioritized list again. Now, here's some of the elements I'd like to make sure I address. I wish I'd had a better chance to talk with all of you. I understand there was some, something there, but we'll work on that in the future because I value your input, and some of you I've had a chance to talk with off to the side and here and there as we met and stuff, and I appreciate your input. And you guys need to be able to communicate with the commission. But anyway, back to the main thing, one of the first things that came up was that our roads are crumbling in York County. As one guy told me, he said, yeah, my potholes have road in between them. And you can't argue with that. I mean, I have driven it, we've all done it, and we knew that we needed to do some elements. And looking at the legalities, we knew that there were some problems about you can't have a fund where they go around potholes. So we came up with an idea. As we go around, and let's ask everybody to tell us what roads they need paved, what roads they think in their area. Because one of the questions I heard said, how are we ever going to come up with this list? I said, give us a chance, we'll come up with it. It won't be about getting the list, it'll be about making the cuts and trying to get to it. So we did that, we went around, and you will see, and I should go back and mention, if we ever forget, this is where we were before we started. We had about fifteen million dollars. Karen, to advance this, just, okay. This is where we are, this is the dramatic change through our two thousand and eleven ballot. And these are the roads that I'm talking about that come up to two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars this time. And the list of roads that we're repaving, we got a list from around the county, and then we went back and looked at the mission statement, where they traveled, was it safety, was it connectivity, economic development, were school buses on it? And from that, we came up with a $50 million list. And if it, I, let's see, the color, the resurfacing roads are in green, some of them, they don't show up, but you'll see they're all around the county. So we touched pretty much everybody. And the point I would make is by repaving those roads, you don't have to worry about a pothole washing out in a year or six months, or as I find out, I found out during the last pennies for progress, when they were washing out in three days because it rained so much, you got a better chance. Our plan is to resurface those roads so that they're there, and you can then pull those off the list. And the other roads, the funding can be put to make those work and to make those better. And hopefully, that makes good sense and helps us move forward. And so that's how we addressed that. Also, at your list, there were some roads that fell off of 2003, and some additional funding we needed for a project from 2003. And we committed and were asked to consider it, and we took care of those through the tune of $60 million to try to clean up. As they say, to clean up the mess and move us forward so we can go forward. The next thing we heard was we gotta get the cost estimates right. And I will tell you, I'll share this with you. I was on assignment in Spain, and I always got up to be connected to you guys and to find out what was going home. At 2:00, I would run back to my office and get on the internet and look at the Herald. And I remember that day when I looked and talked about the cost overruns on the 2003 projects and how my heart sank. They go, oh, man, they're gonna kill us. But you know, it's just part of learning. We knew that we had to get better estimates. Now, when I came back this time, and one of the reasons I was honored and glad to come back was the staff that had done pennies in the past had gone on. And so what I talked to you about, how we did the process, how we included the people, how we traveled around, we spent hours talking with your transportation group, and they are exceptional, and they have done a good job. I want you to know that, I appreciate them. I may go through withdrawal not seeing them so much, but I do, I'm just kidding. But one of the things they did was Patrick got a company called HDR, which did a comprehensive risk analysis. You know, they've done it across the country. I think I remember Texas, I know they've done it in Florida, they've done it in Washington. The SE 120, 126, they call Malfunction Junction in Columbia, they're consulting to do that. And what they do is they take every project and they identify the risk, they bring in the experts to make sure that you get to an acceptable percentage to make that estimate right, to do it. This time, I feel very comfortable, and I'll share a personal story. They do this thing called a Monte Carlo simulation. Councilman Johnson was with me when we heard this guy explain it. And it was very smart, very brilliant, and I swear, watching paint on the wall dry would be more entertaining than that, but it was accurate, you know. And I found out, my wife and I, ironically, a few weeks ago, went to our financial planner, and he's looking, you know, five, six, seven years down the road, whenever, where will you be, what will you do? And we paid him, and they did all this stuff, and some guy calls in from Greensboro and says, Mr. Helms, said, here's where you stand, Mr. and Ms. Helms and all this, and said, these are the percentages, and we feel very good because we want to make sure we're accurate, we use the Monte Carlo situation. Now, I started laughing, and my wife thought I was laughing because it showed there was no way we were gonna tire anytime soon, but I said, no, the funny part is, we've heard about this, the county is doing it. It just reaffirms the hard work to try to get these prices right so that this next time, we can move forward. You know, and the other thing is, we talk about the priority on the list, you know, and I am one of six. And one of the things we did by going around the county and asking was we tried to harness the collective intelligence of the stakeholders of this county so that everybody had input and we could gather data. Because I promise you, you know, where I would put the list and put some things might have been different than everybody else, but you have to respect what everybody said, you have to build it, you have to use the core beliefs. You know, one of my concerns is 21, because I think it's important for economic development. And I brought up about, you know, I think it should be higher. But then it was pointed out, listen, the reason we did this cost analysis, the reason we tried to shore this up is we want to make sure that we're accurate, and we feel that we are this time, we've done our homework, you even said you've talked to people. And more importantly, moving a road down doesn't have the same impact that it did before because we should meet these goals. By moving this road down and putting these others up above it, they get done quicker. And one of the things that came out of the studies and everybody said is, not only, and I've heard Michael say this, or Councilman Johnson say this, we gotta find a way to get these roads done faster. And so the staff said, if we move these up above, and 21 with the process and the planning, it helps everything flow more smoothly. And that's just an example, but that's how we tried to do the list now, this time, is not only in terms of priority, you know, we looked at the safety, connectivity, prosperity, quality of life, we also looked at it and talked with them and said, okay, how quickly can we get this done? And, you know, if you look at the bottom of it, there's a thing about, I think it's Neely Road, that's an extra $10 million. We were trying to find a win-win for everybody, you know. Kevin Madden came up with a number that's sort of in the sweet spot. It's conservative, that gives us potentially some extra money down the road. Two things. If that extra money materializes, then it's very easy to get that road done. But at least by the way we put it on the ballot, everybody knows that we're not promising. As they say, with the 267, we're preparing for the worst by adding the Neely Road, we're hoping for the best. And with, as long as something catastrophic that nobody knows, there should be, we believe, extra money at the end of the seven years that can go in, if need be, to, projects change, you know, or to do other things. So that's what we have come up with this. You know, and we've got a lot of opinions. And when I talk about with integrity and giving people the talk, we listened to every meeting, as long as somebody wanted to talk. I had people in the back going like this, but no good, we let them talk. And they did, but we heard and we learned, and hopefully, we've done this. The one thing I could say in conclusion, that I've seen it and I've lived it, it means a lot to me, you all know how I feel about the safety. I live on Riddle Mill, which I said, it's a two-mile road, and in my lifetime, there's probably been eight people that have perished on it, one of them being my father in 2000. So I know what it's like, I know how important it is to make the road safer, I would have known anyway, but it's a personal thing. I have a hard time getting past it. Pennies has had a profoundly positive impact on this community, and we all know it because we've worked together, and it hasn't been easy, and there've been challenges, there's been budget estimates, but you know what? We got a $200 million infrastructure bank ran out of it. And I'm hopeful that soon we hear about the next infrastructure bank grant. And they know what we're doing with pennies for progress. They know in North Carolina. We've talked to people in Florida and Georgia. So what we're doing is right. You've hired good, you've selected good people for the commission, and this commission was an exceptional bunch. In the past, everybody, there was one time where everybody just looked at me and said, okay, what do we need to do? This time, it wasn't like that. And that might be why the priorities are a little different, but it's a good thing because I'm not into being right, I'm into doing right and working with everybody to try to get the best. You know, I said you don't get ahead by doing what's easy, do what's hard, but pennies works most importantly because it's the one thing that belongs to the people. They get their input, they come to us, they entrust us to compile the list, and they get to vote on it. They get a chance to buy, we get a chance to make a difference in every community. It works because good people who care work to make it happen. I call that the power of goodness, and you're a part of that because you have supported this program, and anything we've asked, you've done. You know, and the greatest benefit, one thing I wanted to show you, is from those humble beginnings, and let me back up too, if I can make it go. This is the latest. That's what this county will look like with the pennies for projects there. From those four little lines to this massive spaghetti that makes our roads better and safer, that drives economic development, that improves our connectivity, and makes the quality of life better. And the last thing I'll say, and then you can go, the one thing I said, and I believe, the most important benefit we get from this by making our roads safer, Chad, you've heard me say it many times, is the one thing we'll never know, and that's the names of the lives that will be spared. Good for us. We're good people, we practice the power of goodness. I thank you for your support. I think the county staff, which is exceptional, they are prepared to make this work, they're prepared for the future. I look forward to seeing what pennies five bring because we have one up on everybody. I had a conversation last week, and I'll shut up, but with Joe Carpenter from Gaston County, and they talked about the Garden Parkway, you know, and it-
Y'all were used to this in those meetings too, weren't you?
I was gonna ask how long those meetings ran.
All right, I'll shut up.
Now, go ahead.
But the thing is, they're working on the bridge now to try to get across the top road. I thank you for your time.
Well, Michael, what's the boundaries? Can we ask any questions or no?
Yeah, you can ask questions, certainly.
And then just one other thing, too, as far as the amended right-of-way inclusion, does that affect, we need first reading tonight, is that correct?
On the, on what, sir? I'm sorry.
On this pennies? I mean, we have to, is it three readings?
It's three readings, which would be scheduled to commence on June 5th with first reading.
Oh, first reading then?
Yes, sir.
So we can go back and get the next one.
So, question number two, if we vote it down, how much time do we have for the committee to come back to make the November referendum?
You are cutting it close if you were to vote it down because you would probably need to call special called meetings to get, the ballot has to be the election commission by August 15th.
Okay. So questions for Jerry?
I have a-
Mr. Winkler.
Comment. On your map, when you're showing everybody what's done, you're missing a blue line for Highway 97 between Sharon and Hickory.
I saw that this afternoon, I, there was others that, yeah, there's more I know.
Want to make sure those people have been fighting for a long time.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure that my comment was for Levity's purposes, and I appreciate everything you've done, and I think this county does, and it was aimed to the folks behind you that you couldn't see, but they were all cheering for you.
I'm sure they were ready for me to shut up, but I think we have to reflect on history, and I'm sorry if I-
The other question, the four lines that were, are they on there? The four lines that would have been done in 20 years are-
They might be somewhere, I don't think they are.
Yeah, they're not referenced, so that was-
They were done. So, yeah, we got our 15 million bucks.
Let me, just, I have one burning question. One road you referenced in sitting on RFATs, to me, it's kind of like, it's a must, so I didn't understand the priority. So if I heard you correctly, you were saying all these other roads that got moved ahead of it, 21th and Sharon Road to Carolinds, was because the smaller-sized projects could be done quickly and hit hard? Did I hear that?
That's right. It won't really, when we talked to the staff, the timing difference was not so much that it couldn't be done. The same thing, one of the reasons we did the repaving and just said it was repaving was you don't have to go through all the permitting and all the other stuff. Once the money comes in, you put the pavement on the road and you fix the roads.
So did the committee consider the facts about the need for the, all the 77 congestion and another avenue of transport and how important it was? I mean, RFATs were butting heads all the time about to try to figure out another avenue to use.
We talked about it, we discussed it, and like I said, it ended up with trying to evaluate the needs and listening to the communities. I, like you, would have liked to have seen 7, I mean, 21, but I understand the needs of the Fort Mill Parkway, and so that's how we did it. We did address Sutton Road, we do have one section that will need to be dealt with, but as the timing goes on, hopefully, there's ways to do it. Ultimately, it could be the top of the 2000, or the pennies for, pennies five list, and we'll see where it goes.
So you're talking about 21, when you say top of pennies five?
It could be. I mean, that's, I won't be, I'm sure I won't be a part of it, I'll be an old guy, so.
So you're kind of anticipating there's a good chance it won't make it in pennies four?
Oh, I'm hoping pennies four does because pennies four will take the top half from Captain Steve's down to 160, that will leave one section there. And, you know, it gets us closer. I wish we had had more money, that's what the commission talked about. The most important thing was to try to get the projects that would get it passed, to get the right projects, but also be mindful that it needed to get passed. And, you know, as I said, there is no bad list because every road we do comes off the list, and funding from other sources can come there.
Any other questions for Jerry? Yes, or Mr. Roddy?
I just had a quick question. Well, quick comment first. We definitely appreciate all your hard work and effort and your commitment to making our county roads a heck of a lot safer. My question was, the carryover projects, are they still in the same order as they were on pennies three?
No, they're at the top.
No, I mean, as far as the ones that we carried over, is this how they would stack up if they were still on that list? Because, okay, so they're in the exact same order if they're listed on pennies three, just kind of-
They're all project one.
Yeah, they're grouped together.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, the, trying to think of the names, it's been a long day, but I know that those projects from 2003 will get done, 72 and all.
Mr. Johnson. Jerry, thank you and your committee for all y'all have done, the commission for doing what y'all did. I guess, I certainly, I surely would have liked you, 21 North, but this is a good roads list, and this is the type of thing that's gonna help York County long-term, so I commend you all for what you all did. My question is this, that today, we were in a meeting, and actually, a pennies for progress committee meeting, and it was brought up about putting, the county's about to pass a utility policy to talk about how we would reimburse or move utilities. And the question became whether or not that should be actually included in the referendum. Do you all have any comments or thoughts about adding some type of utility policy directly into the referendum so that people know exactly what they're voting for from a utility standpoint?
At this point, it would be unfair. I think what we were told was that you folks had decided that we needed to include the utilities, and we marched forward to that drum, and that's what we did. If changes need to be made for the future, then I would, I would say, yes, go do whatever you folks think right because you're entrusted to do what's best for the county. But that commitment was made, it was expressed in our meetings.
Well, I don't think anyone's changing the commitment. I think the question was whether or not we should actually put that commitment in writing inside the referendum.
Yes, and we plan to do that next week.
That's what I said initially.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think that raises a good question.
Ms. Cox?
Before I, before I jump into that question, because I think that is the one lingering question that came out of our pennies committee, I do want to thank all of the folks who served on that commission. I know it's not an easy job, but I see many of you here today, and I thank you, Brown, John, Carl, thank you for what you've done. Are there things I wish that were on here that aren't? Yes, but I see a lot of good things for all of the districts, and I think that you've done a good job, and I think that you responded to the citizen committee that came out, I mean, by cutting the amount of right-of-way and utility costs from 40% that was in pennies three, the new projects is gonna be less than that, 20, less than 20% in pennies four. That's a direct response to what the folks asked you to do. People in the community kept asking me, and I kept beating you guys down to do some repaving. Thank you for putting the $50 million in repaving. I think that will go a long way to getting this passed. What the gas tax hike does to this, I don't know, it'll be a curious little question mark, but on the issue of the utilities, I think we had some healthy- mark, but on the issue of the, the utilities, I think we had some healthy discussion, it's probably something that the entire council needs to be made aware of. It's always been a policy, and, and certainly think that it needs to be transparent and folks in the community, but I know that Patrick and our legal counsel discussed in our meeting that, of the need to make sure that whatever utility policy is approved, we've got to incorporate the others, and we thought that, I mean, I thought that that is what recommendation we got from, from legal counsel, is that it, it needed to be a county policy issue, and whether or not it can be incorporated into the referendum, that's kind of the only area the council has the authority to act.
That's right. Certainly, it's a question I've got to look at for the benefit of the commission and, and council, but sitting here at first blush, the, the, the policy has historically been a county-driven policy, and the estimates, I understand them, incorporate 100% acquisition of utilities and relocation, so, to the extent the policy itself, I, I, I think it, you know, without looking at it, it seems to cloud the, the question of the projects versus council policy, what it supports in the, in the furtherance of, of utility relocations, and it could be placed in the ordinance that council approves as, as an adoption of the policy. Again, we've been operating under 100% relocation costs being assumed through the program, and that's in the number, so I don't know what clarification has to be additional to that because they're already within the, the numbers that the commission reviewed. But I will look at it for benefit of both.
I think there was some concern about ensuring that, I mean, making sure that, that, you know, most of them, especially the local utilities are cooperating, but some of the, some of the others have not responded to the request to locate their areas, and I think that's going to take some effort by you guys to make sure we just don't say, throw everything in there without there being some measure of accountability. I mean, that's exactly what we discussed.
That is what we discussed.
That does make sense to how, when we say we're paying for full utilities, you know, this is the scope of what we're talking about, and you're-
And we're not talking about five miles, we said three miles, we're talking how-
And, yeah.
And making sure that we are not allowing the, the scope increase that we've seen in prior ones, which have led to some of the overruns, you know, I think everybody here wants to see all 16 roads get done, and, and if we could do that in Pennies Four, or 16 projects get done, that would be, that's a success, and, and-
Absolutely.
We, I think y'all have laid the, you've laid the framework, you've done a fantastic job, I think council though has to come back in and try to make sure this utility policy, whether it's connected to the referendum or not, meshes with what you've designed and, and planned so that all the stakeholders are involved in this.
And again, we didn't get to talk with you very much.
We'll wrap it up with Ms., Ms.-
You did good. I tried.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to say, I'm a big fan of Pennies for Progress, and I'm a big fan of yours and the guys that helped you on that commission, and I kind of illegally made a presentation before, before I was on council, it was legal then, it wouldn't have been legal now. But I felt, you know, very listened to, and I think Patrick, I have to give kudos to Patrick, he's, he's just a, he's Johnny on the spot when it, when it comes to, to some of the, some of the questions and things, so, appreciate what y'all have done and the effort.
Well, thank you. We're all passionate, just as you are, to make our county better, and it, like I say, and I'm trying to speak for everybody on the commission. It was an honor to serve, it was more of a challenge this time than ever, but we got here.
Well, I misspoke, I'm gonna wrap it up with Mr. Roddy, and before he speaks, I do want to say, like all the other council members, we really appreciate all the hard work every one of you did, and we understand all the burdens you had to bear, so I didn't want to exclude myself from making that comment. Mr. Roddy.
Now, I'm just, obviously, we all just seeing this pretty much for the first time, and I do want to point out one thing, this is just a comment for, for you and the commission, if y'all have a chance to look at it. I've noticed every Pennies project that's, the last project always seems to be the project on the south side of Rock Hill. Every last one, and it always seemed to kind of get rolled over, and I see the major project that's in, in my particular district, is number 16 again, and it was the last project on the last Pennies list that's getting rolled over. In the very first Pennies, it was the last project, and we didn't finish that up until 16, probably 14, 15 years later. I just, I've always had a concern that, that very last project that is kind of dangling on by a string is always the major project on, on, on the, on the south side of Rock Hill. I would like to see those projects start to move up and-
Let's hope, and let's pray, that this risk analysis that has been done takes us into the new beginning, and what we believe that all of these projects get, gets done. Because, you know, those of us that have dealt with the early days, I understand it, but seeing what has been done with the planning and the feedback, I think we got a good chance. Time will tell, but if we can do, if all of these projects get done, then the future is very, very bright. And the fears and the challenges that we have endured over the years, some of those go away, and then it just makes it easier. You know, there is no perfect list because you'll never get 100% of the people to agree. And there, most of the lists are good. The only bad list that would be out there is the one that the voters turned down, and we were desperately trying to make sure that we did this to represent all areas of the county, to try to do what's right for the county as a whole, but to touch each area we possibly could because we knew if we didn't, what the odds were of some of the projects that they desperately needed would ever get done.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yes, sir. Sorry, it takes so long.
Next item, council to consider the city of Rock Hill's hospitality tax capital grant application in the amount of $1 million for the Rock Hill indoor sports complex, and for the people's knowledge watching that's taken out in segments through five years. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 33 of the York County Code of Ordinances, personnel by amending and clarifying the York County codified policy addressing part and full-time employees' pay termination and resignation over and compensatory time, applicability of existing specified holidays and an additional optional holiday, calculations, accumulations, and applications of annual leave, calculations and accumulations of sick leave, miscellaneous leave, exhibit D to the policy setting forth current after-hours care providers, exhibit E to the policy to providing the current list of safety-sensitive positions, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to point out, we'll have three reasons, I've got a couple more things to say, but if you doubt, if you doubt that there's a need for this additional, additional optional, optional holiday to allow our employees to work the polls, ask the people when you go to vote tomorrow what they think, because last time when I heard the vote, I heard they were talking about, they don't pay us in North Carolina suing certain, so and so, and so, and so, this will allow our regular employees, by law, cannot, cannot do it without taking a day off. This extra day off just basically gives them the day off and, and allows them to do it, and it could very well help solve some problems that might be coming, but if you got any questions about that, ask the poll workers tomorrow whether they think they make enough money.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider first reading of an ordinance entitled to amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commenced in July 1st, 2016, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commenced in July 1st, 2016, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other fiscal matters related to county government, relating to county government.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Committee reports, the Honorable Christie Cox, Pennies for Progress Committee.
I love it when you say that.
You tell me to say that every time.
I like it. I like it. We met this afternoon at 5:00, and we had some discussion, actually, this is the staff called Penny's meeting, we discussed the Pennies Three financials, and there was a report that was given, I assume the rest of the-
Send that out tomorrow to everybody.
Yeah, that, I think that would be good, that you guys can take a look at where all the projects stand and where the 60 million rollover came from. We also discussed, just had general discussion regarding the utility policy, and, Michael, help me out here, but I think one of the things was, we were going to get some follow-up, and, and Patrick is going to talk with legal counsel to ensure that, that we have some accountability measures in there that, when, when we adopt that policy. Is there anything else that I like? There was some discussion about the Mount Gallant Road reimbursement to the school district, apparently, there was a project that was promised that the school district would get repaid some money, of course, it's not in writing. We made the decision that that's just something that they need to bring before the full council for decision, that's not something that we should make a recommendation on, so, that was about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is council member new non-agenda comments, any council member have any new?
You know, I always have one, at least one.
Thank you.
I heard Robert say, "Oh, my God."
No, I just, I just want to put out to the county manager and the rest of the staff,
please get us some information on this overwhelming concern about the maintenance cleaning staff because I'm getting calls left and right, so please kind of update us, kind of where we at, so when we do get these calls and emails, at least I can kind of-
Yeah. Again, what we're going to do is collect some information, get it to you tomorrow when the information's come in, and we can refer to it.
Right, because, because the only thing I've been able to tell people when they reach out is that, you know, he's looking into it, you know, and if, when we got people's jobs on the line, they, they want to know right away, and the only thing that we can tell them, or I can tell them, is that, you know, county manager staff is looking into the possibility, not that these jobs are gonna be, but we're just getting information for how we use it, some of us.
And I don't see anybody, oh, yes, Ms. Cox.
I sent an email out to council about this, and I want to follow up in discussion about this. This is critically important, this doesn't just affect me or my road, this affects all of the districts. I really would ask this council to support a legal review of the interpretation of what was done with the water park because it has dramatic effects throughout the county, and it's this council's job to set policy and to take a look at matters to see whether or not the ordinances themselves are being followed when there are discretionary interpretations made at staff level. That's our job. Our job is not to micromanage, but we, we do need to have a review, a legal review of that. I'm asking this council to support a legal review of how that decision was made from a zoning perspective, and also for us to look deeper into how it affects all the rest of the council districts and how the interpretations are being made. We, as a council, can say they need to be made in accordance with the, with the ordinance that's in place, and to, one of our main goals is growth management, and that is how we set our policy, is to set forth and to come up with some parameters for making sure that the communication between staff and council is clear about what we want to do, not just me, but what this council wants to do, wants, wants our staff to be looking at when we're looking at growth management. And I've sent that email, and I would ask you to please look at that and please support a review of that.
Mr. Winkler.
Just a quick thing, in 1962, President Kennedy, Kennedy declared May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that's today, so that's why you should have seen a lot of flags at half-staff today around the state, and so, I just wanted to say, remind everybody that today's Peace Officers Memorial Day, and thank you to all of our peace officers.
Well, I appreciate you doing that for the council. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. Move we go into executive session to discuss a contractual matter involving coming, coming construction, a personnel matter involving the tax, tax assessor, and to receive legal advice on two zoning and one regulatory matters.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
9:00, we, we hit that. There's no action items coming out of executive session, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.